Do you have any zoomers tonight? One zoomer, man, we are. Late in October, that's okay. Save it, save it for another hot night. Very great. Typically, we start with matters for engineer, our engineer couldn't be here this evening, but he had a relatively light agenda as well, so we don't need to do that segment. Yeah, probably, I wish, I forgot even what started it.
You didn't even start?
No, totally forgot.
Just gave us an update.
What's score? Who's winning?
Everybody.
All right. We do have in for Andy, our solicitor, Scott Denlinger. Scott, thank you for being here. Andy should be with us again on Wednesday. And Jane, do you have any particular topics we get to? Okay. So, do you have any public comment? Okay, great. So we'll get right into the get into right into the agenda in order. Mike, is there any any particular you want to tackle first? Well, I think A is manager report anyway, so why don't we just do that and then we'll circle back to commissioners for a quick advisory committee update?
Not too much to report on this month. First thing I'd like to draw to your attention is the budget schedule. We'll announce that again on Wednesday evening and you will receive your budget books this Friday, God willing, and then we will have a budget workshop next Wednesday in this room at 7:00 PM. Budget workshop, yep. First responders appreciation night, that is going to be on Monday, November 24th at the Oil and Fire Company. Dinner will be served at 7:00 PM. A couple of little notes for you there. And our annual awards dinner. Where you recognize the service of all volunteers and employees, that is going to be held on Tuesday, December 16th at 6:30 PM at the Flower Town Country Club. Jim mentioned that Andy is here tonight, or I'm sorry, Scott is here tonight for Andy. Wallon Avenue Master Plan, just wanted to give you a brief update, remind you that we had submitted a revised act two remediation plan in late August. DEP has 90 days to review that and we expect that they will date all.
Every single one?
Every single day. Get it right before Thanksgiving, but hopefully it's a good Thanksgiving Day present. The committee that you formed to guide the master planning process, they met on September 1st. And I'm sorry, that should be October 1st, and they made some recommendations on the final concept plan. Couple minor adjustments from what had been previously reported, nothing significant really. I guess the big one is a multi-court area, they're saying like kind of leave that out. Leave that kind of meadow grass condition for now and maybe somewhere down the line, somebody decides it should be something and revisit that later, but for now, not built that. That's where we are with that. We're trying to set up a time for the consultant to present that plan publicly and that'll probably be at a workshop meeting of the board either in November or December, depending on their availability.
Mike, what was the, what drove that decision around?
Suzie and Jim participated more than I, but it's my understanding it's more, more neighborhood concern than anything.
I said, well, it's a tricky shift, I got my assumption based on previous.
It really wasn't a fully developed part there, and I guess that was part of the concern from some of the neighbors, I mean, you can
correct me if I'm wrong.
I would imply it's not necessarily a meadow area, but a future play area, a future play area that perhaps not yet defined. And I think the core idea of having open court that could be used potentially for people bringing transported pickles along that, there's something that was of concern to the neighbors. And I think there's also felt that we had adequate, adequate basketball court space not too far away, so I think the hope is that maybe there's a more creative use of that corner not yet defined, but not a hard surface. And then I don't think they went to hold up the process otherwise, because we certainly may not obtain that in any way, so just improve what we can at that time. Okay.
Yeah, the idea is, you know, it's a master plan, a master concept plan, certainly not a final design. You could go on and on and on arguing like the main point details, but like Suzie said, yet to be defined in what really works there.
Yeah, I would only be ready to say that it was all in for a meadow area. I mean, that's always an option, but I'm not sure that I would have to find that result.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I only expect from
I just wanted to verify, I don't think that was.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Next item is White Marsh Valley Country Club. We received notice that they got permission from White Marsh Township to conduct trap shooting, which is like clay pigeons skeet shooting. I know a number of the other private country clubs in the area do that. And it was something that they wanted to do experimentally. It'll be done over at their driving range on Saturday from Sundays. Starting in, I think, November, November through March. So we'll see how that goes. None of it is happening in Springfield. We have part of White Marsh Valley Country Club isn't Springfield Township, but this particular activity is not going to happen in our township. The closest neighbors are the Four Hill Farm, so probably don't get to make complaints, but it probably will be heard, just like our pistol, that's the view.
They inform neighbors of that news at that time?
There's no neighbors. I mean, Mr. McCausland has the farm in back of them. Yeah, and apparently he started pocket shooting back there as well, so.
This is for deer, so it is?
No, no, it says clay pigeons.
You have to be reminded of those.
Yeah. Bus Stand, Water and Sewer Authority, Sewer Project, they have completed all the main installation and as of Friday, they've done all of the lateral replacements. They're replacing the laterals from the main out to just inside of the curb line. There was a little bit of heartburn about the way they were leaving the cleanouts, they were six inches above grade and they looked to be a pretty nice tripping hazard and a target for lawn mowers and were ultimately going to get broken. People were going to trip over them, so we were able to convince them to lower them. So they're in the process of going back and lowering all of them to be flush with grade. And then today I learned that they have hired a new paving contractor to come out and do all the trench restoration and possibly if they get through all of that, the final restoration of roads before the winter. Bigger company, so previously we were, we were informed that they would do all the trench restoration, but probably wouldn't be until the spring before they did all the final paving, but they're pretty sure that they'll be able to get in and get everything done because it's a big company. So update on that. The recycling composition audit, do you recall that a few years ago we had a an audit done of our recyclable materials that are taken over to Republic Waste Industries for sorting and separation and ultimately sale and recycled. We had some of the cleanest recyclables of all the we assume that a lot of that is because we do it by hand and we'll pick it up, you know, with collectors on the back so we can monitor it as it's being collected. There's still some contamination that gets in there, can't get everything out, but as part of the audit process, we're going to send another crew out in advance of our recycling crew to try and restore it and get any kind of mess out of there. We're going to tag the cans and try and inform the people that, you know, hey, you're putting your pizza boxes in here, we don't want that, like that's food waste. Or you put plastic bags in there, we can't have plastic bag. So if you hear any calls about that, that's what's going on there.
Mike, is there any concern that that effort would cause a artificial performance, you know, based on shortly after that?
That's why we're trying to audit, or we're trying to inform the people to not do that in the future and keep that stuff out. Like if we just went through and we took all the bad stuff out and never educated anybody and said anything, yeah, I think that that's probably not the way to go about it, but if we go to the extra effort and we tag the cans and let them know, you know, I asked them to make up a form, just like check the box, you know, inappropriate material, plastic bags.
Okay. So the actual audit would be, would be indicative of what's actually happened?
Yeah. The Lloyd Estate, so you recall a few years ago, the Lloyd Estate was subdivided and developed in the Springfield section for, I believe it was 34 single family detached homes, very big homes. The balance of that estate lies in Cheltenham Township and that property enjoyed a court stipulated agreement for 216 age qualified apartments that would be constructed in eight four-story buildings. Nobody really wanted to see that built. I'm sure that the developer or the owner could probably find a developer or builder that would build it, but I don't know that anybody really wanted to see that many units built there. Fox Lane Homes would build a Springfield side, actually entered into an agreement to purchase the property and they've recently obtained preliminary subdivision land development approval from Cheltenham Township to build 43 townhouse slash carriage homes on that property, which is a heck of a lot better than 216 apartments. These are age qualified, 55 and over carriage houses, they look very, very similar to the new homes that were built at the corner of Butler Pike and 73. On the what's the winery up there? Yeah, power more across from Phil's Tavern. Same developer building that, so you're going to see a subdivision land development plan before you in the near future. The Springfield portion of that is very, very small. It includes two I don't want to call them dwellings, one's a garage with an apartment above it, the other one is sort of a caretaker's house. They're going to knock them down and they're going to build one new single family detached dwelling. And we asked them, since they weren't going to be able to use the rest of it because of grades and things, to build a big detention base on there. Try and help out, so they agreed to do that.
And that'll take some of the stormwater from the Cheltenham side?
Yeah. Yep, but it was all going to run in our direction anyways, so.
But the existing big single family homeless, the old one, that's going to stay?
That's gone, that's been gone. Oh, yeah, that's been gone for years. Yep.
And there's no additional trail work that needs to be done up there, we're happier.
So in the, on the Cheltenham side, yes, the Cheltenham piece there is.
But with everything on our side, we might have leverage over.
Yep, we're all set up, they build it, they run right along the common municipal border and then all the way down three or nine. Next town, where the bike park billboard. Library, it was in Ian's report as well as mine. We had one of our library employees is experiencing some respiratory issues and thought that it might be tied to the building itself, possibly mold in the building. So we called our insurance company and said, hey, can you do a an air test in here? So they arranged for an industrial hygienist to come in and September 30th, they were there for like five or six hours. They took samples inside and outside the building, inside the ductwork and inside the air handling units and sent that to the lab. The person who was on site said, this building looks really good, I don't see a problem here at all, but we wanted to rule it out, make sure everything was good, so. We'll keep you informed of that if it comes up. Next two items.
Executive.
Executive litigation. And then the final one is Public Works Personnel, just giving you an update, we have three labor positions right now that we're interviewing for. And we have an administrative assistant position that we're interviewing for. Into that process. That's it.
All right, very good. All right, so why don't we do our inaugural advisory update? Beth, can I start on your end?
In terms of shade creation mission, we had resumed meeting, we were off for a while in August. Have resumed in September, focused on goal setting, we're in this company here. We've reviewed some recent donation tree requests. But the real focus was on a project that was initially slated for Sandy Brown Park. We started in the Peter Park assessment in spring to where we walked the rubber park, I think it was pretty scary, but offering part being those about things that might need attention or projects that that particular company then had brought. And identified that Sandy Brown could have such shade associated, additional trees. After visiting and visited with us with state potential placement for that, we think that actually that might not be the spot to start with. Because historically trees have not lasted there. And it was harder to state than we get to state it, so.
Your reason it was a court?
Yes, exactly. We thought in the first visit, we were here this spring, Jared, who's our chairperson, did some soil testing and there was an initial thought that he thought we could do some matching for things that would survive there, but we're going to do a trial instead, which things that he might have in his nursery that he can donate. So it won't be to any expense to township, but I may do a trial run, like use it in there, see what we do. And then you can probably go back to our needs assessment. The only thing that we talked about was that Oak LA needs a good trimming. In the past, members of Sheik Tree have donated their own time and expertise to just kind of keep the lower ones, you know, heightened so that kids aren't running into them. But we talked about the importance of every few years having an harvest, check it out and have it very properly pruned to ensure the long champion of those trees and so much time and effort resource allows to create that space. So I don't want to talk about.
Great, thanks Beth. I think we've talked about it before, but the lack of shade around the Cisco Park new playground. Has that been tagged at all possible?
Yes, it has.
Three area?
It has. There's some challenges there. Just in terms of this space, like the size of the tree that would be necessary to actually provide shade for that space. It doesn't exactly, well, I don't know where cats would create root system issues, I think some are there. But it is on the agenda as we look at that. Park had gotten some attention and gotten a decent amount of relationships recently, so it wasn't top of the list for attention, but the need was definitely identified. Yeah, they do need some shade.
Great. Awesome, Brendan?
With the EAC, you know, there's been a lot of work from the with the Open Space Subcommittee that exists there, you know, a little bit of an endeavor to have that become a full-blown committee, but I think at this point in time, as a subcommittee of the EAC, it makes sense. But they've done some incredible work as part of outlining different things, updating a lot of the reports on open space in the township. And so it hopefully positions us to be able to address these issues as they come up. You know, we're always challenged because a lot of the open space that we had is privately owned. And so, you know, there's not a tremendous amount of control, but you know, to that end, we have also started up the funds, the open space fund here in township, which I wouldn't want to mention that again, where the township will match dollar to dollar, I think up to, was it 250,000?
200.
200 each year. So we're hoping, hopefully the back can grow and would enable us to to make moves when opportunities present themselves to preserve some of that open space. Additionally, there's, there's a draft climate action plan that's going on with EAC, they're trying to put together. You know, where we can do our part as municipality towards, you know, the broader solution of technically find it. So that's an ongoing project that has, you know, got a lot of efforts from everybody. And then everybody is really still asking in the glow of the project and how we've been making great progress there, so that was yeah, had everybody very elated in the last meeting. Individuals who showed up were a couple who showed up and, you know, probably why I brought up the deer earlier, it was on the brain. But, you know, lots of people with concerns about deer and their, their guards and everywhere. You know, so, and I had explained some of the limitations that we have. Number one, you know, this is all residential areas and it's pretty difficult to, you know, basically people looking for a cull, which is a little difficult in these residential areas. And but, you know, it's something, you know, I like heard it comes to my backyard all the time and every time I go up to the car, it's a little bit kind of elevated in there. So I mean, it's, it's a point of concern. I don't know whether it's something that we want to discuss again, but you know, I know we have a lot of stuff with our neighboring municipalities where, you know, they might be a little bit better positioned for, for such an endeavor. And, you know, it's not like the deer just remain in our township and not the others, I mean, they're traveling all over. So that was, that was the only thing that rose out of the last meeting there, that was.
Great, thank you, dear. Can I bring up one thing too? Sure. This sort of takes crossing off my list as I kind of get ready to part from the board and this is not something we need to talk about tonight, but it's something I think about often, particularly when we, and there's not an easy answer to any of this either, but I, I, I wish that as part of the dialogue when we talk about open space and open space conservation in the community and we invoke either climate change or sort of environmental concerns. At the same time, we also recognize that, you know, when we in these sort of outer band communities, we really should be promoting denser residential options that are close to a city. When we through our zoning or through other efforts, you know, deny these projects. They have to, we've got a real housing crisis. Real housing crisis. And so when we say no, they go somewhere and more often than not, they go far out, away from jobs, away from infrastructure and I think that we actually exacerbate our concerns for the environment, our concerns for global warming, when we push these projects out to Lancaster, Burke, or, you know, down 73, so. And it's fine, I mean, I, I think that about concerns is maybe, you know, not in our own community or not in our backyard type thing, but I think that, I do think that as we, as we work through these issues in the coming years, some thoughts should be done to that because I think if we were really trying to be stewards of the larger environment, I think we try to be trying to figure out ways through have denser residential areas closer to cities, closer to jobs, closer to existing. Yeah, existing infrastructure, so. And again, it's not an easy answer, I don't know, I don't know what it is, but. Yeah, but it's a valid, it's a valid angle, it's a valid point. So, thank you. All right, John, you're up. Regarding zoning, the zoning board, I think it's just primarily the fact that we are going to lose the current head of the board at Fox at the end of the year. Who really has been a tremendous resource to that body, you know, as I said before, you know, it's, it's a, it's a interesting government body because it is independent and it is sort of semi judicial and can be very formal and so most of the time when residents go in front of the zoning board, it's their first time there and I think they're taken aback by the formality. And just how really it is like going to court and having someone like Ed Fox there kind of shepherding through that process. It's really been invaluable and really is, you know, will be replaced, but he's been in there for a long time and done a very good job, so. And that's sort of the main thing. All right, great. I attended the, the meeting of the emergency services board on September 3rd, so that, that board meets quarterly and Chief of Police is there, our Fire Marshal is there. Detective Bob Charlanza, who who quarterbacks the emergency, emergency management plan. Representatives from all three fire companies are there, usually a representative from the ambulance company is there. And it's, it's a place to really collaborate and talk about issues that affect all first responders and and people that are stewards in a lot of ways of safety, so. In that meeting, police department talked about a successful night out in August, which was, which was great. Fire companies had a couple of specific issues, so I won't get into all the detail, but recurring issue is fire alarm violations and efforts to to cite those, to, to cut that down. They talked about improving Knox Box installations, that whole process, making sure that especially commercial properties have have those available for the fire companies to have access. Winmore reported that they had a successful car show this year. We talked about, we, the, the annual appreciation dinner that Orleans Fire Company offered to host, so Mike had mentioned that earlier, being on that Monday before Thanksgiving. And, you know, they, they typically talk about, you know, new businesses opening up or closing that are going to be, you know, subject to inspection and, and that sort of thing. I think that's pretty much it. Nothing, no, no major projects. I'll mention the meeting prior to that. There was a good discussion, it was sort of a circle back on that fire that happened in Abington, that large industrial fire where fire companies and police departments sent people to respond from all sorts of municipalities, so. That's a good forum to talk about, you know, what was, what happened there, what was learned there. You know, what happens if it's closer to home, that kind of thing. All right, Peter?
Okay, I wear three hats. First with the historical commission, second with the planning commission and third with the Whistaken Clean Water group. The historical, the historical committee has primarily focused on trying to reestablish which buildings are significant, continue to be of significance within the township. They originally thought they would have to do an RFP to get it, to get a good and current list of those important buildings, but low and behold, the staff, staff member started rooting around in the attic and low and behold, he found he found a copy of reports that had been done about I guess, six or seven or eight years ago, which
There was actually two sets.
Two sets, yeah, and very, very complete, and we are about to take, be given copies of those. So that will definitely probably speed up the process. And the, the, the object of the, of the whole process is to, is to try and isolate again those buildings or elements within the community that are historically important and significant, so the process of doing that, maybe meet once a month. So the planners are currently working on zoning within the township, looking at our current zoning requirements assisted by the, by the county, which is always, always there as a backstop or as someone to bounce ideas and, and thoughts off of, so so that, that process has basically just begun and we'll, we'll go through the, you know, A, B, C, D zoning districts and see if they're still appropriate and up to date, et cetera. So I would, I would guess that's going to be at least probably another you know, five, six months before we're, we're done with.
You're still in the definitions section.
Yeah, we are, yeah, so. And my third, my third item is the Whistaken Clean Water for which I have been the township's representative pretty much since they, they started this whole process, probably over 10 years ago now. We do believe that we are close to a resolution with DEP. We have submitted the, what we believe is our, our final plan. And as Mike mentioned, they, these guys don't work quickly, but they're, we hope they're working on it. And the overall thought is that the municipalities that touch the Whistahicken are responsible for the quality of the water in the Whistahicken. And regrettably, over the years, the quality of the water in the Whistahicken has deteriorated to a point that's, you know, fairly impacted. So a lot of, a lot of work has gone on, gone into this. I think we're very close Um, I think we're very close to the end. Uh, one of the big lifts for all of you, because I would be gone then, I think, um, is, uh, is deciding how you're going to, as a, as a group of all the townships and the sewer authorities and things, contribute to, to projects that may or may not be within your municipal boundaries. Okay? Um, there is a, we have formed a, a, a for, a consortium, um, which begins to address how, how the group at least thinks that it should be done. Uh, but again, ultimately it's up to this board and the other twelve boards and the, and the, and the water treatment plants to make that final decision. But, uh, in all likelihood, it will, it will involve, uh, you, you approving, uh, work, uh, significant work that will done, be done in other areas, not within our township. So that, that's a big lift and, and, uh, get ready for it. So, question?
At considerable expense.
At, at considerable expense, yes.
And Pete, uh, there's no, I mean, like you mentioned, the, it's just the municipality that touched the Whisahican, but like water from Jim Thorpe or, or, you know, upper.
No, 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 Montgomery County, Montgomery, Montgomeryville is the source of the Whisahican.
Okay. So there's no other tributaries of kind of blowing.
Well, there are a lot of tributaries, but they're all encompassed within the townships that are, and the, and the sewer.
So even though, but even though the source of a lot of these issues might be way upstream.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. Because of the headquarters of the Whisahican, believe me, they're the parking lot of Montgomery Mall. That, those are the headquarters of the Whisahican.
Well, that's a fairing mall. Maybe they can.
Yeah.
Is that ground, is it groundwater that comes up from the park? Like the headquarters of the Whisahican?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For any streams and, you know.
Yeah. And there are, there are, there are probably hundreds of individual contributors to the Whisahican. And, and the Whisahican is, is, is important for everybody because, you know, it, it does supply at least a quarter, maybe a third of the drinking water for the, for the northwestern, uh, part of Philadelphia. And even if it touches us a little bit, we, we tap some of that water, maybe a little bit.
A little more.
Little more, yeah. It wants to ruin the public system, yeah, so.
Yeah. All right. Awesome. Thank you, Peter.
Uh, as you know, I serve with parks and rec and we were off for the summer months as they always are. Uh, but relatedly also serving, uh, Walnut Lane and Recreation Center. So not necessarily have to report on those two, but this most recent meeting, um, would be just great for those who don't know, um, on our board sits a couple of school, school board, a one school board member, a school representative, a representative Phil Fesscon, he introduced the two new students who you basically invited to attend the meeting, uh, attend the, uh, committee, uh, this month, uh, and every meeting we go through, like the thing that happened in the parks. So of course they, this first time they were hearing about the fireworks in the porta potty, that was, um, and Emily goes through the admin report attention, you know, how many people are coming into the program that we have. And that's, that's the admin, which she gave, uh, on the agenda, we had two items. I'll do the easier one first, which is, uh, just a reminder to you through that the intervenants for the fields are coming up. It doesn't sound like there have been major issues, but some minor issues of people perhaps using fields. They're not permitted to use the field and just trying to be sure everyone's, uh, working through that, uh, and being prepared to address. The land use agreement again, they have the year, uh, nothing else to discuss, just that, to keep everyone advised. Uh, a group from the escape, the Springfield Escape Park Association came to represent and inquire as to the approach they should take, uh, if they want to revive this theme park concept. Uh, and the committee is generally receptive and maybe wants a state facility to invest somewhere in the township independently. But their advice, and his good advice was to go to, uh, go back to the drawing board and bring that uh, more than what they have drawn before. So for those who may not be aware, uh, approximately five years ago, they presented to this board on the day of the time, um, uh, plan, and I believe, let's say that the quest was approximately, or the, the full plan would be approximately five hundred thousand dollars and the suggestion was that they go back, raise half, and then with Florida Ben consider potentially committing the other half, the same with that Royal Beach. Uh, since that time, as we know, they've now entered into a more holistic review of the, uh, rec center site. And they went to at this hour and figured out how to re-prepare. So the committee suggested, if there's a good suggestion, go back to the drawing board to the extent that if there, if there are other possible savings, other designs to, to bring forth, be sure to get on the agenda for next month's meeting. So that letters can be sent to all of the J C neighbors to let them know that was interested, uh, once again, and potentially, uh, Royal Beach area. Well, I shouldn't say Royal Beach, no, that's as a part of the rec center project, the Royal Beach has. Um, so that they would officially be on the agenda, the letters would officially go out to neighbors and be able to get the neighbor feedback. And at that point then they could, depending on that feedback, depending on the committee's size and views, they could then make a recommendation to us, maybe of a different committee. I think that was a reasonable notion. I do think that the committee itself was generally receptive, but of course is concerned about neighbors, I'd say. Uh, another notion that came out of that, I think, is relevant and maybe also something I'm just speaking to, which is, uh, perhaps it doesn't always have to be the biggest, um, the X team version of state park. Perhaps there's small versions that incorporate across various park spaces. And so that we can get together and talk about parks regularly, which is hopefully getting to a point where we can do a park asset assessment across all the parks, much like Chatri is doing, to be sure we can, uh, pay touch with the, what we expect in terms of parks. And just kind of get back to that. We plan on doing this many, uh, for many years, but with the add in the rec center and Walnut and, um, Carson and so many other projects, sort of been on that work, but that came up again, okay, let's, let's give back to that if we can, so that we can identify things like potentially skate or whatever you would say, kind of escape. Things that use wheels, you know, wheels that will spaces can be, uh, prioritized as a, a policy here. So.
Unicycle?
Potentially unicycle, whatever you're into. So, um, just, well, just, uh, just a big conversation about it. And I think, um, they were all just trying to grapple how to, how to do it. Now, State Park Association did mention they do have funds, but they want to be sure there's a site, uh, some sort of site that they're dedicated to where they can go out and, and ask for their budget. That, that makes sense, right? Otherwise, this chicken or egg can't forever. Uh, so that was the bulk of our meeting. They did mention a potential inquiry into, uh, access to perhaps that Walnut Lane area where we said, maybe there's some space there to have some sort of space that makes sense. Uh, which again, there was a member of the Walnut Lane committee and a neighbor there and he says, oh, I didn't know. And that's fine. That's special, still had, yet to be had. But again, the outcome, they bring us some more ideas, uh, so that it can go properly through the cops and that committee that actually recommend the recommendation to us. And then we can have a, a better discussion of what's possible and setting up those potential policies or, or possibilities and that it can work. So, they're ready up again. So, um, on that note, just, just wanted to touch density and capacity. I agree with you, John, and I think that comes up a lot in parks in general, um, and it came up again in conversation about these little league space and how it affects the neighbors once again, and what, what is the capacity of all, of all our parks? That often comes up in our conversations, um, and then the deer issue also comes up, although it actually comes up more, more personally, and the, the heads up, not noted by everyone, I'm sure. Those are the things we got looking, hopefully get out of, uh, issue by issue analysis, which is what we, uh, you know, I believe last month, we wanted to out. Uh, and they're just facing, uh, the committee's facing, you know, the, the quest of the day sort of thing. Hopefully to move to a point where we can do the assessment, maybe we develop a rubric for assessing ideas. For example, if Donald Card comes up on the stuff right here, adding a firm rubric that we can sort of pull out every single time. But hey, we already talked about this and here's what we can about, uh, hopefully get that coming. Hopefully that.
Thanks, Suzie.
Thank you. I, I have a general question, which touches on Suzie's and, and Jonathan's and, 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 and Shatri. Um, so when I started my career with the township on the board twelve years ago, there was this huge cry almost annually that we weren't planting enough trees. Okay? So, uh, parts and recs would point to shade tree, shade tree would point to parks and recs, you know, that back at home. Has, has that been settled? Do we have a goal of planting trees and continuing to green up the township or?
Well, I mean, I, I guess I would say you have to look at it, and it's not just the tree that a town, that the township plants itself, right? They look at it holistically.
Yeah.
You've got subdivision land development ordinances that impose requirements on people to plant. So I think some of those are being overlooked. You've got thirty trees a year that you give out, like, already that get planted in town. You have the tree donation program that happens and I don't know, there's probably a dozen to twenty that get planted each year on that. At some point, we're going to run out of place to, to plant all the trees. I mean.
Well, I think we have, well, I don't know, parts and recs would know better than, than, than I would. You know, are we, are we short of space for trees?
I think the answer is that shade tree, I think, perhaps regularly reference shade tree as the committed tree planters. It is come to parts and rec and then, hey, let's do better collaboration. I don't think we're against the collaboration. Kind of get out of the projects, working, like I said, to have a holistic view. And hopefully, you know, in the next year or two, uh, connect the dots with the, the shade tree and that type of thing. So you're not off, off the mark. I think it's, everyone wants to do was in wish list.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I, I would hope that we would, you know, elevate it to a, a point of importance that we, you know, pick a number, whatever it's going to be, you know, hundred, two hundred, five hundred, thousand, seven, uh, and, and make sure that happens because I think the township's commission, yeah, right, township needs them.
I think, uh, I mean, you may be hearing less chatter recently because I think there's been enough like-minded people that have seen that as a priority. So, so asking for more trees or development plans, upping the donation program, I think a lot has been done, so it's probably less of a.
I don't think we ever had a line item in the budget for trees.
No, this came up last year, right? The shade tree was inquiring about it and curious where things like, you know, moving garbage, things are really divide trees to plant, they're not related, things like that. So I think that that's coming up, you know, in terms of like how, where, where is that helping the budget? Is there maybe a separate line item, um, for shade tree or for trees or for, um, and I think in terms of the assessment, I can imagine maybe, um, support and like some of the commissions working together for that park assessment, maybe Royal Beach in our own ways. And that's probably done in efficient. So if, uh, we can talk more about that, but that's been a conversation at Chatri too. Um, just about more collaboration, because I think there's lots of groups doing similar work with similar goals, but maybe not in collaboration. Yeah. It's been important, thanks, Peter.
Great.
Oh, before I pass, passing on, I wanted to mention Walnut, maybe we can really report back on Walnut. And do you want to put back on Walnut and continue your work?
Well, Mike covered it.
Okay.
Mike covered it in the, uh.
I mean, I just think, but, uh, you know, the neighbors, uh, Jim and I also went to see some of the neighbors' backyards and it, it is very close and there's a lot discussed and it was very active in general. Just wanted to reflect the, the very active, a strong advocate in every direction. And I do want to indicate that, that space, um, reserve in our books, that meadow, I, I don't think that, that need necessarily be ultimate outcome, but they want to phase it in. One more thing is the Cheltenham corridor study and, um, I haven't been active on it. I don't know if you've been or had a chance, just a reminder for anyone who's interested. It came up the other day at community day, uh, because, uh, traffic on Cheltenham, that, that corridor study is happening. My understanding and my maybe even friendly, uh, is that they're working on a public outreach effort soon to arrive.
Working on a survey that will be distributed.
Right.
And then they, they plan on several, um, public meetings to gather input.
You sure?
But they, they, to this.
Um, um, unfortunately, not unfortunately, our, our, our man, our last meeting in September, the cultural resource meeting, uh, Antwerp, uh, the Jewish holiday, but in previous meetings, uh, we discussed friends of the library and the new leadership and the need to sort of, um, employ, uh, some financial budgeting practices, uh, for looking forward, um, and how to sort of donate to the library while keeping, uh, the friends solvent. Uh, that was a, a discussion and I think that they've put together measures, uh, uh, to, to make sure that moving forward that the friends are solvent. Um, and then always, uh, discussion around utilization of library, uh, over the years. Um, utilization has, we mean, consistent, if not growth, uh, amongst all different, uh, uh, continues, continues in the group. You have the high school, you have the donor, you have the, uh, the senior citizens, uh, and the program that's designed for beach. Uh, there is always a desire for more funding in township. Uh, I mean, it's always a, a push. Uh, and so there's this tension between the friends, uh, and, and, and the desire for more funding, but uh, we've got a discussion that are ongoing, uh, but if there is any money in the budget this year, I know the meeting soon. Uh, I think there are programs that benefit greatly from, uh, from additional, from, from pension. Uh, other than that, I think the, the library remains, uh, uh, a great for the gov, programming for good. Uh, staff is great, unfortunately not for, uh, the last two months, but, um, I think the library remains a, a great place for the community and all the, it's going to get to grow.
Great. It's always great to see the, the stats and how it's really used, you know, and the meeting rooms are always full and it's such a great.
Different programming, there's a lot of young kids book, uh, or book clubs and, and reading. But a lot of people know that, you know, the, um, also household waste falls in the lobby and the family, you can hold laptops and computers, anything like that. So, so those are all things that the post of the library offers that are oftentimes underappreciated. Um, but so it's good, I, I, I really hope that there are three more.
Good, great. Hey, good. Uh, I would recommend that we do this regularly. Now, um, we, we sort of kicked it off today, so it's probably longer than, you know, being the first time. So in the future, you know, it could be real short and sweet, uh, but I, I think, I found it really helpful because a lot of times what we talk about in our own committee assignments don't necessarily become known to the other staff members unless it's or other commissioners, unless it's actual agenda item. And many times it's just not. So I think it's good to, to have that, um, even if it's just short and sweet, you know, just a quick update. And it doesn't have to be short either. If there's something, you know, that you want to bring up, you know, by all means do it. So. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's get right into the agenda book. Into B. Any questions on the bill listing for the month?
One question on page one of eleven, right bottom under the Aqua bills. Twelve hundred East Willow Grove Avenue, maintenance repair, seven hundred and seventy-six bucks for water or repairs or?
I think there was a toilet that was wrong.
One toilet?
Yeah. Where'd it go?
It ran off to somebody else, yes.
Order's not cheap.
Yeah.
Is that it, Peter?
That was it for me.
All right, great. Uh, Mike mentioned the budget schedule, which we will make a formal announcement on Wednesday. But just to be, uh, redundant, we have our budget workshop meeting, seven o'clock here on October, uh, the fifteenth. Um, the formal budget presentation will be, uh, during our November business meeting. Uh, and then our budget hearing and adoption will both take place at our December, uh, business meeting. So the only standalone meeting from here on out is that budget workshop on the fifteenth. Uh, okay, D, distribution, excuse me, distribution of municipal pension state aid, um, pretty self-explanatory. We've got the. Um, the Commonwealth's, uh, deposit, which, uh, covers our our previous contribution. With a surplus of a hundred fifty two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents, which we have the option of. Uh, distributing across us for pension plans or or reimbursing us for. The contributions we've already made. And I think, Mike, last year, we.
We reimbursed ourselves a hundred percent.
Hundred percent, okay. And so we have the option of doing one or the other or a portion. And, uh, Mike, do you want to add what your recommendation is here?
Yeah, I I mean, I think it's really up to the board, whatever you'd like to do. Um, I tried to give you three different options to to show you what you might have coming back to the general fund. Um, obviously, if you put a hundred percent of it to the pension plans, you wouldn't have anything coming back to the general fund. If you wanted to apply, um, that, I'll call it that surplus fifty fifty between the pension plans to try and get them a little further ahead. And then give fifty percent back to the township, um, you're looking at about seventy six thousand five hundred and sixty coming back to your general fund. Um, if you wanted to do, say, a third to the pension plans and then bring two thirds of it back to the general fund. Um, you're bringing about a hundred thousand back and paying fifty thousand extra towards the pension fund, so, um.
But the general fund is doing well this year. I mean, we're not short of cash, are we?
We're not, no, no, but that could help you, you know, next year, um, you know, you could apply it to next year's budget if you wanted to. Bring down, you know, potential tax increase, you know, you go increase your opening balance and, you know. Uh, the only downside to that, I'll caution you, is that the next year, if you don't do the same thing, you're gonna be starting from that much further behind. So.
Yeah.
Another way to do that is to just kind of like put that back to the general fund and then through your capital carryover. If you have a couple of projects that you want to get completed that that work up to that number, just kind of like pay their money in capital reserve funds.
Yeah.
So totally up to you.
In terms of like an, um, an investment scenario, would that money be earning more in the pension plans?
Yes.
Than it would be in our general?
I think as long as the stock market does well and, you know, but yeah, we're very, very. By law, we have to be very, very conservative with our investments, so you you really don't get a whole lot. Uh, in the general fund or capital reserve. The wealth management accounts a little bit better, uh, but that's kind of tied up, you know.
What's our, what what interest are we getting currently in the general fund account?
One point eight seven, two percent.
Okay.
Not great.
This is TD.
TD. So, you you know, um, if you if you want to try and put a little bit towards the pension plan. Uh, but you want to be able to have that money available too, because you'd always put it in later on, you know.
Yeah.
But then you've lost that opportunity to grow, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the last couple of years, we put we put it all in.
I think prior to last year, you applied it all.
Yeah.
To the pension.
And last year we did one.
Last year you brought it all back to the general fund, okay. It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't really, I don't feel strongly, um, one way or the other, so someone has a strong feeling. We need to decide by Wednesday.
Yeah, because you you have thirty days to distribute, uh, the money was the stake isn't to you and you won't need again for that.
Probably if there's not a strong feeling, why don't we split it right down the middle? Mike, you don't have a more definitive recommendation?
Um, I mean, I will tell you that i- if you're. Concerned about tax increase, um, you might want to bring it, bring back a substantial amount back to the general fund. So that you might want to consider, if you look at your budget, taking some of the capital projects that you would normally tax for next year. And just paying for them out of your capital reserve to carry over.
I I would say two things against, not necessarily with lotion for me. But, yeah, I would look at our expenses next year and I think with the projects that we're exploring. The the chances of a tax increase are are higher, so I would, I think, benefit the board to have an offset for that. And then two, we are, and again, no one knows what the market's gonna do, but we are at very high. Uh, valuations of the market right now where. It could continue on like this, but also, I mean, there's a sense that, um, you know, there's got to be some sort of cooling offices or, you know. Pullback at some point, and so, uh, the benefit of having it in those higher earning accounts for the pension. Might be nullified in that case too. So I think there's two compelling reasons to.
And you're potentially paying at a premium, paying at a high rate.
Right.
Price right now.
So just as my two cents, I mean, some some enough compelling reasons to probably want to have more claw back from the general fund. Um, to give yourself more flexibility next year.
I think I would echo that and then also, I mean, you said, if we put it back to the general fund, we can then later. Put it in the pension and be aside and, you know, there could very well be a pullback coming here. That if we did one of them, drop it a little extra fun, it might be more opportune than dropping it at this point, um, at these all time highs.
Yep. It's compelling, I'm I'm on board with that.
I agree. For what it's worth, from our last meeting, the fund are doing well, I think they're not hurting the situation that they.
That's what I was saying, that they're doing well, but there could be an end.
Could be a change.
Right, you'd be buying high, you know, for all intents and purposes too.
Right, they're doing well, and so if there is a pullback, then we could drop money in them six months from now, get the pullback. Or we miraculously just keep rolling, then, you know, we allow that money in our pockets towards.
Right, so sadly the consensus is reimburse.
Reimburse themselves.
Okay, great. So we'll vote on that Wednesday?
Yep.
Very good.
It'll be a resolution.
Any questions or comments on the zoning? I think it looks like there's only one, uh, case for the next meeting. Yeah, okay. Uh, Rec Center master plan, we talked about a little bit, but essentially. And, you know, as soon as you mentioned, I also sit on the Rec Center Committee and the Walnut Avenue Project Committee. Um, if you recall, we had a little bit of sticker shock once we, once we had a preliminary design, we got it priced down a little bit. Uh, obviously with the dramatic increase in cost of of construction in the last couple of years, uh, we. Asked our architect to go go back and look at an option for some pre engineered buildings. Uh, instead of all conventional construction and, uh, came back with a significant. Uh, reduction in total costs, a little bit less square footage, I believe. Um, a little bit less bells and fewer bells and whistles, that is, but still very much. Um, a lot of function, you know, for the kind of things that we envision that this space can do for people, so. Um, total estimated cost, and and again, this is very, very estimate, a little under fourteen fourteen million, which also includes soft costs. Um, up to two million dollars of contingencies, allowances and escalation.
Do you have a comment for the rec?
So we had five million, up to five million. So if the project was ten million, we would have to pay five million in the rec, it would be. Be five million, so it's five million max, so if we do a project for fourteen million, still five million and we come up with the other nine. So, um.
And we're still failing to secure that fund or those funds are available?
Yeah, they're good through two thousand thirty. Okay, we still have to do a formal application, you know, uh, it's it's a line item approval, but.
It is a state, state, right?
Yeah. Um, one of the other items that Mike had mentioned that we can consider is using Woodrow and Associates. As the civil and site engineer, uh, which which could realize some good savings, uh, based on our relationship. And our negotiated fees as a municipality, so, um, and obviously we like Tim, Tim is, Tim is great in. In in all ways, so, um, that's something we can consider.
Yeah, I talked to him. In fact, it's funny how that conversation came out, um. Boyle, you know, who's been helping out at K S D, said if you if you choose to go forward, uh, I know they have. Didn't, I don't want to be negatively about the engineering firm, they have. Firm X, you know, teed up to be, you know, they're a civil guy, um, we're working with them on a project that they're missing some deadlines and they're slowing schedules down. Uh, so you're gonna have to have a frank and honest conversation with them upfront. I said, I said, well, you know, one of the things I was thinking about was maybe we could use our municipal engineer, because I'm looking at the hourly rates and we're a lot less than what they're charging. And he goes, well, who's your municipal engineer? I said, oh, it's Tim Wood, it's a smallerish firm, Tim Woodrow, Woodrow Associates. I know Tim, I'm working with him right now, he's a great guy. He goes, I would definitely say, you know, look into that, so. You know.
Sure. Um, so, uh, I had the opportunity to, uh, go to, uh, uh, look at the Doylestown Rec Center today. Um, and I came came away with really three, three questions to the board. Uh, based on the plan that I'm looking at in our book here, okay? Um, the first is, you know, is is everybody really comfortable with this concept of these individual bathrooms? So, you know, this, uh, and and Doylestown does have this, you know, they have the individual bathrooms, but, um. It, you know, in in light of a more or less more traditional locker room type. Uh, environment. Uh, the second thing was, and this is a very, very strong point of the, uh. Assistant manager that made me is that, you know, you, when you're, when you're looking at a facility like this, you really have to ask the big question. You know, how is it going to be used? Who's going to use it? Blah, blah, blah. And, uh, that came about because, uh, Doylestown does have a very minimalist kitchen. Involved in in their facility. And the point that he was making was if you don't have any kind of a kitchen facility. You you can't have any food. I mean, you can't, you can't have a wedding there, you can't have a banquet there, you know, you 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 basically limited this facility. More or less to athletics, you know, and the whatever the meeting, uh, whole, uh. Traditional meeting space, uh, is used for, um, and interestingly enough. In their individual meeting spaces, which, you know, really is a big room which they have breakout walls, uh. Each of each of those three sections has a small kitchen at what you would kind of look like a, kind of like a school. Elementary school kitchenette, pipe, you know, sink and little, uh. You know, that kind of stuff, yeah, yeah. And the the third thing is that, uh, uh, they seem to have. Uh, they they seem to really have latched on to and liked the idea of at. Within their building, having these these, uh, big garage doors. That you could, you can open and you could back a truck in or a car or something or a catering. Operation or somebody, you know, delivering four thousand.
Elephants if you go to circus?
Elephants and all kinds of stuff, you know, put them in there, you know. So those those were the only three, those are the three things that. That made the cause for, oh, there, I, there's one other thing, is the, it's it's very difficult in this plan to see. The source of natural light, you know, and I think natural light in all these facilities is very, 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 very important. And it it, um, it doesn't, doesn't look to me as if the gymnasium has any natural light. So, just an observation.
On the gymnasium, I think you talked about it, and there would be. There's probably, um, standards for lighting so that we're not affecting flooring, and there was a conversation at some point that we had about that. And creating the maximized natural light while making consideration for the play that's going on in the gymnasium, basketball.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
That's all the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, they, in their gymnasium, they do have, uh, four, four, uh, light footage.
Yeah.
And there was one score thing, Jimmy, correct me, I think we talked a lot about the bathrooms and and I should say a lot. We said, hey, there's gonna be a later time when it better clarity on those bathrooms, this is still preliminary trying to get on that. So that we can cover those details. And so, for example, um, some of us might prefer one giant stink in individual stalls, that sort of thing. So, there's still time and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's that's so, that the only reason I'm bringing it up.
Yep, I'll comment on the the kitchen stuff too, because that was a big topic in a lot of the meetings. And some of the facilities that we went to way back when, uh, we'd have referred with Montgomery Township. Uh, there were some that had some pretty industrial sized kitchens and a number of them had regretted it. That it really wasn't used that much.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you'd need an industrious kitchen. I think, but I do think that you you might need someone.
Well, when I say industrial, I mean commercial, you know.
So what you described, we absolutely talked about having something very similar, uh, because we're gonna be having arts and crafts. Classes and those kinds of things, and the kids are gonna need to wash their hands and like, so there's definitely gonna be, you know, um. A kitchenette type thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, but this, this.
Yeah, that's all overkill.
Well, no, this, this is their kitchen. This, this is their, yeah. Uh, do they, it doesn't look like you're being overkill to me.
Did they say that they were, uh, helping utilization of that?
Or? It's just, they haven't really utilized it.
But I would say.
Their number, I really think it's a hundred percent that it's, there was not a single place we visited that we really enjoyed. Commission, which could be.
Well, I'm not saying, what I'm saying is you're gonna live, you're gonna limit your, you're gonna limit your, uh. Your options with regard to leasing this, so if that's important or or if it's not important, I'm just bringing that up.
I think the committee took took the stance that that for that expense to have a commercial kitchen, and it's a pretty big expense compared to any other amenity.
This is, this is not what I consider a commercial kitchen.
If it's got a hood system, it's got all that.
But it's not residential, it's not residential, no.
And I, and I do think that, uh, in somewhat, it is tragic, this day and age, that it's still an issue, but. Given the fact that bathrooms continue to be a hotbed issue, um, I think that our solution sort of nullifies that. Yeah, it was multi use bathrooms, it's sort of, it could be used by anybody and, uh.
But there are only eight of them in this plan.
I mean, it's not a rest stop on the turnpike.
Yeah, I think.
But but I, but I do think that otherwise we open ourselves up to complications that I just think that.
You're right, that simplifies it. There's really no issue from that standpoint.
The issue that I I found, and I'm I'm just realizing this is important, but like, if you ever go onto a bar or a party, whatever. The men's line, the bathroom is zero, and then you got forty people on the women's line waiting on the bathroom. If all these bathrooms are single use, they can just go to any one and become more efficient. Like, it's not like you need to wait in the women's, you got a single use pump, so it's almost single, single, and they're gonna do that, it's just more efficient.
I think for families and thinking about families who are having them having single use. Spaces that a parent can walk in with three of their kids, because that's how it has to go. It's anyway, a young man is walking in like everybody in, so a space is big enough to do that, that have a changing table or. You know, we gotta be.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question, um. At some point, do we have money reserved for just the demolition of that front portion and that accounted for in this scope of work?
It didn't, I, oh, yeah, the the demolition costs.
That's a.
Yeah, they're one of the first ones.
Subtractable from the big number?
I mean, you still have to pay it, there's probably, uh, some economies of scale having it as part of the general contractor.
And how much do we have? It just comes to curious.
Off the top of my head, how how much we have.
But it was a grant or something.
Well, we have some money from, um, Montgomery County, the Community Development Block Program, but that's for the record, we call it a belated.
Just wanted to.
Right, so I guess we were at the point where we need to decide we're moving forward or not, um, and I would just circle back to really, there's really three options. Just sort of big picture here, we could be out of the, uh, Rec Center business altogether and not have it as an amenity for the community. We, you know, it would be obviously the cheapest, sell the land, make it a park, you know, whatever, whatever have you. Uh, the other option is to. Put significant resources into the two existing buildings that, even on their best day, aren't great spaces with with a lot of utilization. Uh, or this, which is, um, you know, build a new facility that's that's a lot more usable for for several generations, so. Talked about it that a couple of times, um, I think it's. I'm not gonna use the phrase no brainer, uh, I think it's a solid investment. You know, that we're looking at this amenity for our community for the next thirty, forty years. And I would, I would say proceed.
How much use are the current buildings getting?
It's hard, it's hard to really gauge that because they're they're not ideal for any one function that we actually do there. Uh, the parking is so limited that we can only have one building online at a time. So you're either using the gymnasium and the other building is sitting empty because there's just not enough parking. Or you're using the other building and the gymnasium sits empty, so, you know, there's, there's a world in which that building could be used. Meeting rooms, you could have things going on in the meeting rooms, like, um, right now, one of the bigger users is, well, there's a couple of, yoga is a big user, um. The karate program is a big user, um, we have a lot of use in the gymnasium, uh, but again, it can't go on at the same time. But, you know, in a new. Uh, but again, it can't go on at the same time. Uh, but, you know, in a new building, you can have all that happening because you've got, you know, like. Three or four times the amount of parking, uh, that we have at present, the community needs it.
Yeah. So it's really getting a lot of use and it could be getting more use if we weren't so limited with parking.
And for all its work, in the last part of rec meeting, uh, there was notable increase, uh, participation, increase in programming and facilitation, which is. You know, as a result, not only of, of their efficiencies, but having a, a programming coordinator now with, um. So it, it, I think like you said, there could be, there could be increased utilization. But mindful once you, to, to the point about the, the kitchen that are not to be, um, taken for granted, that staff would have to make. Much greater considerations, for example, for hosting events and then increase their staff considerably and increase their operational. Um, assessment considerably. And so I think this would be a very deficient choice. And who numbers coming down with this, um, digestible number. Without obviously, you should spend that at least.
Well, in an ideal world, I was gonna say, you should spend ten billion dollars.
Exactly.
Um, so I think this is much more digestible and much closer to their expectation.
Which, what it's worth.
Yeah, and you've got the most recent experience in talks with it.
Yeah. It's better to be es- conservative estimating high and low than the other way, of course. So, okay. So do we, um, do we have to vote on anything? I mean, the.
I think we need to.
Engagement is already in phases that we.
We did it in phases and we have an agreement with M K S D that took us up through, um. Their work project that they just completed. But I think you need to authorize them to go forward with design development at this point.
Okay.
Uh, which would be the next set.
Yeah, alright. Do we have somewhat of a consensus? Does anybody feel really strongly about?
And do you want to try and use Tim? Because I can back that. I'll talk to Sylvia about backing that. Civil cost out and then we'll just use Tim as needed.
We're, we're happy with M K S D if they, if they are designing.
Yeah, I haven't worked with them as closely as you folks have.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, uh, nothing jumps out as a red flag or anything like that.
Doesn't sound like a ringing endorsement.
Well, it's not my expertise either, right? I'd be, you know, how many times have I worked closely on a project with an architect? So I don't really have that much of a basis. Um, you know, we were really impressed with the firm that, that was working on the walnut. Uh, but that's a different animal too. Uh, it's hard to, it's hard to compare it with apples or that.
I, I think the community warrants a facility like this. My only, my only recommendation would be to. We continue to explore the possibility of putting some type of a kitchen facility in there so. We don't know long term limit ourselves to, uh, yeah.
So I think, what, what if the kitchen used, like, I don't see a good place where you're gonna have a banquet. It's a rec center.
But even, but even to bring food in.
Yeah, there could be a middle ground where.
Refrigeration, you have, and things.
Why aren't you gonna take a walk to the library and large meeting room there behind that one?
Right now, right now.
No, I know, I know. Yeah, there's a little kitchen. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, you can't do, can't, could not do catering out of that kitchen.
No, and, and I, I think we've sort of like danced around it. Parking Recreation Department has no interest in being in the catering business or hosting those kinds of events.
Okay.
There is an awful lot of handholding that you have to do.
Oh, I know.
And we're giving it the space away, right? Like, you know, so we're not making anything on it. For the amount of time that the staff has to coddle the person who wants to use it. You know, it just doesn't, it means something for the extreme.
And, and if we wanted to open it up, let's say we wanted to use the gym as a dinner facility for like. They can prepare foods from commite, right? You're not, you're not preparing.
So first, it's part of appreciation, right? We have a caterer that comes in and they, they bring all the stuff hot and everything. No kitchen involved there. So the same thing.
Yeah.
Prepare food onsite for a big event, you're gonna need that industrial kitchen. And that's a massive expense and it's gonna get used like three times a year.
Yeah, right. So.
So like.
So we just made the decision not to be.
We cater there, they'll come in with things that keep the food warm and then distribute. All they need is.
Well, the, the board of health has, has, you know, recommendations regarding. You know, what you need in order to have a, appropriate legitimate facility, so.
A million six, they want to have.
Seems, and fridge.
And a fridge, yeah, and a warming.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure cameras understand what requires a cater a large event, uh, with, with what it requires, I mean, they do it all the time.
Right.
And I'm not thinking. Catering events, right? Except when you said, I don't think it's helpful in the, one of the business of Christine and organizing theater events, but.
Outside of the thing.
Right. Um, but have you, like, to Sufi or, or something about camp or kids being there or. I mean, a place to keep water cold or hands washed. Yeah, that's a refrigerator will be there, a counter space will be there, a, a cleanup stink has been discussed. And we're far away from that, but certainly when it came to, are we doing a vet hearing that needs a. Whole size kitchen, someone can cook a meal. Everyone said, you know, that, that's beyond the spirit of a staff. It, it is, it would be such an extreme ramp up of what.
Yeah, yeah, great.
And, um, the residents don't have a demand for it either. And, as I mentioned, it's really valuable. Hundred percent of the faces that it is, that it was with much regret that they had that. And not, not, you know, not the child here and trying to add support.
Yeah, it was good observations, Peter. Absolutely. Oh.
You took the time to go up there and tour it.
Did you test out the rims? See if they could, you could dunk and reverse it? Was it open? Like, were people playing in the gym?
They opened it for me. Yes, they were very accommodating. Yes. So the entire township was playing golf. It was their golf outing day.
Oh, is that right?
So the.
Why don't we have a golf outing day?
There are two people there.
You could have planned, uh, if you like, M K S D, it would be a, not a full effort if you were to switch. And why, what would that?
You probably wanna do, you probably wanna do another R and B, trying to get, unless you know of somebody. That, you know, you've worked with in the past that you wanted to go after. The firm that we used for these buildings, they were great until. The one principal left the firm and, yeah, then the firm just kind of basically died. Um, so we got through it, but, you know. Losing an architect mid-project is not ideal.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, it's sort of reflecting on the question that I answered sort of naturally, like, I mean, they've been responsive, right? And. I mean, there's really nothing that like, you know, they didn't hold us up in any way. Um, they're professional, they.
Designed the, and built the image, the.
They did, yeah, yeah. And, and even if it's not the, like, because I think the question of them, I'm like, you know, hey, we're gonna build a. Building very, very similar, like, any cost savings you could pass along to us, like, just, you know, take those plans off the shelf and. Build it here. And they're like, oh, well, unfortunately, you know, that, that, those architects are assigned to another project and. You know, people that we have assigned yours and available are, but, you know, they're, they're in-house, they're in the office next door and. There's gotta be some advantages to having somebody that's built a facility very similar to this.
This speaker, that number got gave me at this phase is one seventy-seven.
That last page in your book. So whatever is under the design, design development. And then you move to construction design. You probably want to authorize them all the way through construction design. Just keep moving.
Okay.
The gym, the point I think, uh, responsiveness isn't often, though they've been responsible the long way.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, when we told them, you know, like, the, the twenty-some million dollar project was a little bit more than we were willing to bite off. I said, well, what can we do to try and get you to where you want to be? Um, so.
Yeah.
That's, uh, a good fact that they, they, they were able to sort of circle back.
Yeah, they have a bunch of people working on it. I mean, they've all been responsive and complimentary to each other, or a team. Alright, so that's a resolution you will prepare for.
Motion, yeah.
A motion. Alright. Alright, uh, G, recycling report. Any questions or comments there?
You have a new one in your folder tonight.
Okay.
Disposal cost went up like a couple bucks, like thirty-six dollars a ton right now.
Should we move some money over for that? To her fund? Okay, alright. Okay, H. Alright, so, um. This item is regarding Pennsylvania Avenue and the joint effort. With Upper Dublin Township in looking at Pennsylvania Avenue and potential. Recommended improvements there. And, uh, as Mike laid out, it sounds like. Um, there's some joint interest in moving forward. For this funding program that the engineers recommend and think this is a good fit for. And Upper Dublin has offered to take the lead on that. Submitting that process. And so really the upfront cost that we're looking at. Is one half of the one fifty, which can be paid over two years, I think you said. Uh, the pre-application cost, which, which would have to be incurred before an award. Um. So do you want any questions on that? That scope of work?
You don't have to spend any of it until we get world award.
Okay.
But, you know, wanted to make you aware of the worst case scenario, what the cost was.
Okay. So none of that seventy-five needs to be paid unless we know we, we got the grant?
Yeah, unless you want to move forward with the design forehead.
Yeah, but, but it's not required.
No.
Okay, great. I know there's some programs that want to see you have a completed project.
You're pledging to it, that you'll do it if you get the award.
Okay. Alright, great. Alright. So, do we need to vote on moving forward with that?
Yeah.
Alright, great. Alright, let's. That is the book. We talked about boat schedule, we talked about the award dinner.
Have, uh, one item. That's in your folders, parking restrictions, nine hundred block of Mermaid Lane.
Okay.
Uh, there's a certain new, um, recreational facility, uh, that is. Housed inside of a former industrial property, um, and parking used to be permitted in front of it and never really was a big deal, but. With this facility now attracting more, um, turnover and, uh, people unfamiliar with the facility. Um, there was a concern that there was gonna be a sight distance issue, uh, with car parked in between the two driveways, uh, that serviced the, the building. So, um, traffic safety officer went out and looked at it. He agrees, uh, he'd like to remove the parking from the, in between the two driveways. And, uh, specified distance on either side of the driveway, just so that people, uh, can see clearly coming in.
That's wall parking in between, huh?
Yeah.
So how many spots would that eliminate?
Uh, one, two in the middle, five, three, four.
Okay.
I, I think of all the parking. Cause I think a lot of neighborhoods parks should utilize.
In between the two driveways, he says, guys, got it now. Yeah.
And then one on each side, so four spots.
It's not, maybe it's not even a full one, but like, you know, it's a certain distance on either side of the driveway.
I guess you couldn't have one spot. It doesn't make sense.
Hey, uh, reminds me a while back asked about, uh, including a crosswalk from Elm or we're into Mermaid. Uh, maybe we should add, uh, crosswalk spray or something here in that block. So just go above without incident.
So the.
Maybe a box with a higher.
I, I can't do that. I, I, I don't think you do that. We, for a crosswalk, you've gotta have. It's, it's, it's got to follow the manual on uniform traffic control places. So we can't, you know, get creative and. Paint the whole thing white or do anything crazy.
Well, what about like some large wooden box that would, you know, like, in front of the bed and.
Yeah, that's a permitted thing. You have to get a permit and do something like that.
Just thinking, I know people whip around that corner. That's the major crossing for a lot of pedestrians.
Do they whip it good?
They whip it good, right around the corner. And there's a lot of pedestrians that come up there. Just maybe look about. If there are any agreements you can do, I don't know if there's no creative. Neighbors or any.
Well, we can ask.
And evidence and. Things you can put on the streets, but they're all the crosswalks, not just here, but. So, so please bring more attention then. Hey, people are welcome.
I'll think about it. Uh, I know we're probably. When the, if and when the area called, whatever it was, the, the plan for match plan for the area, is there.
Thing is institutionally is unfair. Yeah, it is. So, you know, prison. Something like that.
Which, which property are you talking about?
Uh, I. I don't know.
Is there any indication of them doing any different there?
Haven't heard a word.
It's not going UFO. It's where they, it's where they developed Pringles.
Isn't it really?
And, uh, uh, Price.
Price?
Is that for real?
Pringle.
Really?
Yeah.
Cherry was here and he told us all about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we make a chip that has the same shape as all the others?
They grind it all up and then they have bolts for it.
Or as they say, uh, traded goods, saddle chips.
Suzie, the, the treats that you gave everyone around the holidays.
They were like that.
They were like that, covered in chocolate. Oh, yeah. They want to have a question for Scott. I feel like you didn't get any work done today. You're working, you're good.
That means, uh, I did everything right.
Alright, you have anything else, Mike?
Thank you, not.
Anyone else have anything else before, we do have executives, so anything else that's not executive? Any public comment?
No, Billy, eight, four, nothing.
They're gonna want to score some runs. Alright, Jane, we're going to an executive. So you're relieved of your duties. Thank you for coming, as always. Uh, we do have one on line two. Um, just want to let you know. Our agenda is done. We do have a couple of executive items, but we will not be back. So thank you for coming and, uh, see you next time. Same bad time, same bad.